Already.
Happens every year.
Testing.
After clocks, the clocks are off.
Clock in the back is off.
Slushing out there.
It's seven o'clock now. We'll call the order. And if you'd join me at the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to roll call.
Councilmember Kay.
Here.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engel.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
Here.
Mayor Hagan.
Here. Before we start this meeting, I'd like to, actually, the whole council, including the staff, would like to have a little moment of silence for Mr. Largent, John Largent, who passed away. So if you would join us in a little prayer for him, or whatever you usually do yourself. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate you being a part of that. He was a big part of our community through the years, and he'll be missed. We are on to a presentation, it looks like. Would you like to, Chief, would you like to go ahead and?
So unfortunately Officer Palomino wasn't able to be here today, had a family emergency.
Oh, no.
However, every year, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving recognizes and honors all officers that have more than 20 arrests, 20 DUI arrests, or if nobody in the agency has that, the highest number of arrests in the agency. Last year Officer Palomino was awarded the DUI Mat Award with 14 DUI arrests. He received his certificate last week, and we're going to present it to him today, but unfortunately, he couldn't make it. But I think he still deserves the recognition. And so far this year, I ran the stats, and he currently has 15 DUI arrests for this year. So he's already beat his.
Everything okay with him that you're aware of?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's pretty impressive.
Thank you.
So tell him to keep up the good work.
Has been.
So at this moment, we, we're going to go to two, but we need to put eight in front of two. Is that correct? That we're going to address number eight first?
Correct.
Okay, so you want to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. The reason we are moving number eight, it is an administrative matter. It's a continuation from a prior item in which council provided direction to staff to amend the adopted Measure P Advisory Committee policy to go from a five-person committee to a three-person committee. So this is the formalization of that staff direction. We'll bring it before you, formally vote on it. We wanted to take this item before the interviews. If there are interviews, we'll get to that later. Before the interviews, to have a kind of a clean paper trail there, you've officially approved the revised policy, and now you interview for the number of seats available. That is the item. It's relatively straightforward, again, moving from a five-person committee to a three-person committee.
Anything at the dais before we would put it out to the public?
We've discussed it as much as we needed to, unless Melinda has anything to say on this topic, she wasn't here for the last meeting. I'm sorry, Councilmember Walker. Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
I don't have anything to add.
We'll take it out to the public. If you have something to say before we bring it back. Anything online? No? We'll bring it back to the dais. Any last comments before we take a vote?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution XXV, and thus repeal Resolution 27-25 updating NESC on Measure P Advisory Committee policy to adjust membership from five to three.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nays. Okay, so then we will officially move on to number two now.
Mayor, we do have the item listed as conducting interviews. I will share that at one point, we did have up to five people interested in applying for this committee over the last couple of weeks, and especially in the last couple of days, we've had a couple of members choose not to participate further for various reasons. And therefore, we have two applicants that are interested in the position at this time. It has been the council's policy to interview anytime there are more applicants than seats available. In this case, we do not have more applicants than seats available, and we will defer to council on how you would like to handle. In the past, there has been direct appointments, if that's the, the direction of the council at this time.
Council?
Yeah, I like the idea of direct appointments.
Pro Tim?
I agree with that. We don't need to go through the stress of interviews.
Absolutely, I think we should go ahead and appoint the, the two that we have, go ahead and move the committee forward, allow them to go ahead and get meeting and convening, and go ahead and put a application request back out for the third open seat.
Okay, well, that's three, but I'll still ask John.
I could go either way, honestly.
Okay, then, I guess we'll move forward with appointment. You know, there's only two out of three, right? You said two?
He has not come here.
Well, can we at least have him come up and say something, if they'd like to say something or not? It's up to you.
Up to the council, and I know Frank, City Attorney, wants to say something.
Yeah.
I will just state, for the record, the two applicants that are still interested in serving on the Measure P Advisory Committee are Ed Alves, or Edward Alves, and Gabriela Vargas. The other applicants that are in the packet have submitted formal emails to us indicating they are no longer interested. So those are the two who the council would be direct appointing.
City Manager, did they give us any specific reason, or was there any kind of consistent theme there, or just kind of random?
You know, both sort of just said would like to pass on the opportunity, no longer interested in serving.
Okay, thank you.
And one was moving out of state.
Moving, okay. Okay, then, I guess it's official.
Just want to make it clear though, for the record, this, like the newly, also like the newly created Economic Development Committee, since they will be advisory to the council, making policy recommendations, the, they, all of those individuals will be Form 700 filers. So I just want to make that clear for the record, so there's no surprises. They'll have to report any of their financial, just like you all in the Planning Commission asked to. Just want to make that clear.
Okay, sounds good.
Do we have to make a motion to appoint them?
Yeah, you should take it to public comment, though, just in case.
Any public comment before we'd make a motion?
Yes.
It's on, yeah, Measure P Advisory. Okay. Anything online? Okay, we'll bring it back. Humor a motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll move. I'll move to motion to, can we scroll it up there? Is there something specific? There we go. Thank you. I would move to make an appointment for the two applicants, to install them into the Measure P Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Anything wanted to be pulled from the dais? No?
Actually, before we, before we move on, can, can we have an opportunity to speak to the, to the new committee members?
Absolutely. Would you like to go one at a time, or?
Yeah, sure.
Who would like to go first?
What can I tell you?
Well, Mr. Alves, welcome back to city government.
Yeah.
I just wanted to express my gratitude for the, for the folks who did apply and followed through, and came on out and decided to contribute to our community. As you guys, as you guys are out there, meeting with the community, my hopes are really that, you know, when you come back and you talk to us, you, you're able to really demonstrate how and what you guys got that information from, and, and some, some basic stats. I'm sure council will be sitting down, or city staff will be sitting down with that committee, and kind of giving some, some guidelines, or some initial direction on, on where it would like to go. But I really look forward to hearing your guys' presentations as they come up. I believe the first one should be at our mid-year, right? But I guess there is also potential for those even prior to that, if the committee comes up with some good stuff for us. So I just wanted to say thank you, and good luck. I know you're going to look after our town, so thank you.
Welcome. For myself, it's nothing new. I've always cared for Escolon. I've always put my time in, I wish more people would. You know, it's, you're finding out, just on this committee alone. You had, what, five, you're down to three, then to two. It's a shame. That's why people should appreciate what you're doing, because it takes your time, your effort, I mean, it makes a difference in your life, what you do here, and the rest of ours as well. The information that you'll get back from me, and I don't know about Gabby, but it's going to depend a lot on what I learn. I need to know what's going on. Transparency is the key to everything you guys do and I do. The more that we can give information out, the less you're going to get all the rumblings and all the other talk going on, because you're going to have facts. When you get the facts out to these people, it makes a big difference. And they're not wondering what the hell's going on, who's lying to who. You give them the facts, and you support the facts with data, and then there's none of that rumbling stuff going on. And I think it's critical that we show the respect to this community for them passing that one cent tax increase. So we want them to know, we're going to take this serious, and this money's going to go to the best possible use possible. And I think that's where I'm coming from. And I appreciate everyone of you guys doing your jobs up here, been there, done that. And let's just hope it all works out for the best for all of us. Thank you.
Just like to, again, thank you for stepping back into public service. We really appreciate that. You've served this community for a very long time, and being willing to continue to put in your, in time for us. And it's for us, it's, you know, not, and I don't mean that's the council, I mean that's the community. I'm very grateful for your years of service.
I still live here.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Good thing you, congratulations.
I don't think it hurt you.
I said, thank you and congratulations.
I was saying the same thing, sorry.
Okay, Gabby?
Evening, Council, Mayor. I'm disappointed I was not interviewed.
All right, timeout. What the hell happened to Gabriela Vargas? Where is Gabriela Vargas? Is anybody here?
New me.
Oh, BS.
Well, we appreciate, just like with Mr. Alves, your dedication to the community, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I definitely look forward, I know you have a strong outreach into the community, so I look forward to see what information you'll be able to gather and bring back, and advise us on, on what the community has to say, so that we can make the best decisions possible for, for Escolon. Thank you.
I think your, obviously, your community outreach is, is going to be very beneficial to us, and also what you do for, for a profession. I'm very, very happy that you chose to apply for this committee, and that you're willing to spend your time for it, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
I'm just grateful to be given this opportunity. I care about our community immensely, and what the people want, and I know there's a lot of suggestions, advice, and issues with things that are happening now with money, but nobody comes and makes an appearance, and it's difficult to speak on their behalf. I'm only one person, so I think this gives me and Ed a greater capability of reaching out to more people, and seeing exactly what it is that the community wants, not what everybody thinks they want. And I hope that the advice will be taken as we're doing our due diligence, we're not doing this self-serving, and, yeah, that's, I'm excited to be a part of it. The only thing I would like to know is kind of the structure for when these meetings will be, and what the guidelines, and any confidentiality clauses, or anything, so that we have some kind of structure.
Yeah, we have a note here to, we will schedule a meeting with the committee members to walk through the budget, walk through some of the city needs, and we can also address some of your questions about structure, format, meeting types, that type of thing.
City Manager, will that be similar to like an onboarding, like what the council did? Is that something we're going to be doing with all of the new committees?
Yes.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll move on to the consent calendar here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number five.
Number five. Anything else? Anyone in the community want to pull something? No?
I'll just pull three, so I can abstain.
Okay. Pull three.
You don't have to pull three to abstain, you can just notify the clerk that your vote will be for all the other items except for number three.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the dais, one last time, before we humor a motion.
A motion to approve items three, four, and six on the consent calendar.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
I'll second that.
Oh, shoot. I thought you said, I'm sorry. Let me roll that back.
You're excited tonight.
I know, I thought, I thought you said.
He's ready to roll.
Like, let's get it done by eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we'll go to.
Abstain from one, please.
And abstain from one.
Three.
I mean, three, excuse me, the first on the consent.
Okay, five.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions for staff on this. So when are we starting this project?
September. September.
Okay, and what's the duration?
It approximately will be about four weeks.
I know I read the report, but just for the general public's information, can you explain why we had to raise this contract amount even before we started construction?
And I'll lead in, and so we did bid this earlier, kind of in late spring, I guess, for a summer, and working with the contractor, their availability aligned with a September start date. We would have liked to have started earlier, but unfortunately, the lowest bidder could only start their project in September. So that's on the timing issue. We do recognize, when we've done as many projects as we've done over the last couple of years, we're sort of working year-round, and we, you know, desperately want to avoid school times and those types of issues, the rainy season. We just, you know, we're, we're trying to line them all up as, as much as we can, for doing as many projects as we have over the last couple of years. In terms of this item itself, we did crack seal around the snack bar at Hogan Park, and we saw an opportunity where we had a much larger engineer's estimate than a project bid amount. We saw an opportunity to be able to seal the area at Hogan Park around the snack bar. We were pretty close to being able to accomplish that, just through the contingency, which we don't like to use like that. So what we wanted to do is just be very transparent with the council. If the council chooses to move forward with that specific improvement, including the parking lot, we could increase this contract amount, which is still well below the engineer's estimate. These are transportation dollars that we get from the state and federal government, these are not general fund dollars. So we saw an opportunity to be able to do an additional benefit here, and so we wanted to, to take that opportunity if the council so directs.
All right, so let me just verify this. So the original scope for $383,417 was just for the crack seal and the micro-surfacing, correct? Just on the streets. And then through the process? Sorry, I was reading on the screen. So then, the process was now, you've recognized that there are additional improvements that we could do as part of this project at the park?
Correct.
And that's why we're just increasing scope?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, happy that he pulled this, I do have a question here, and I'm glad that you have the map pulled up. Can you zoom in on the area in the lower left-hand corner, the, the orange area there? The, the crack ceiling? I'm curious as to why it is that we aren't doing Zinfandel when we're doing the roads leading up to it? Is that an error in the map, or was that intentional?
On Zinfandel on the far down bottom left?
Yeah.
That is, here in the next few years, we have a waterline project, where we'll be taking out the waterline and redoing up the road at the same time.
Okay.
So didn't obviously feel like it was needed to seal that for just a year or two.
I figured with the, the giant hole in the asphalt, that was probably going to be your answer, but I just wanted to be sure. I had a constituent asking specifically about Zinfandel, and I noticed that it wasn't on the map, but the roads leading up to it were, so appreciate that.
That only is a little, little more work than just to seal.
Yes, it does.
And, and that's a very good question. These are things that are not obvious to the general public, so we appreciate you asking those clarifying questions. The last thing we want to do, which would be another question we'd get, is seal the road, and then come back a year later and dig it up.
Rip the whole time.
To, to put in a waterline, and have people scratching their head, like, why would you have done double work? So we purposely avoided that one for the future work.
Perfect, I appreciate the answer.
Any other questions up here? Anyone in the public have a question on this at all? Okay, we'll bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve consent calendar, item number five.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. We'll go on to staff communications.
Start on that side of the table.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple items tonight. I kind of wanted to just give an update on the audit as well. We have our full city audit that's, should be coming to a close. We're working on one of the last pieces before I write what's the MDA, which is an overview narrative of what the budget is, so looking forward to doing that and getting that done. It's taken much longer than I had hoped, but it's coming to an end.
And this would include everything that was prior, right? Correct?
Yes, it's last year. Not the year that we just finished, but I guess two years back. Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Twenty-four, twenty-five is going well. We pretty much have everything posted that we have our hands on. We're waiting for vendors to provide any kind of stragglers, anything that's out of our control at this point, and we'll leave that open until the end of September, close it, and hopefully at that point, we will just hand it over to the auditor to get our report at that point. We're also working on the transit audit at the same time, and we've talked about some transit dollars here, so that's an important piece. They're waiting on that twenty-three, twenty-four audit, and we're also working with them on their own audit. We have kind of these meshed circles of audits that go on throughout the year, so we have those two going on right now, plus the year close, so we're all busy at work with that.
So Linda, with the audits, is there any way that we can play catch-up and have both audits done by the time next year's budget rolls around, so that we're, I understand there's a process, and it normally lags, but to have it lag a year and a half?
We're changing it up a little bit this year, in the way that we are going to be sending all of our data to the auditor in September or October versus February. So in that alone, we're getting it much faster, so that, that the timeframe is just sped up. And that's been by controls and different processes, making things more efficient throughout the year, so that we are done, and we are finished, and we can provide that over. Hopefully, the twenty-three, twenty-four audit is done in the next couple of weeks, and then that timeframe will work out. I'm going to be presenting the auditor with the, with all the paperwork we need for the year that just closed, June 30th, in September or October.
Thank you. I'll keep up the good work. You're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Chief?
I just want to say, we have Park Feet the other weekend, Lions Club put on a great, great event as usual. Weather was good, and so our crowds were huge, and all things considered, it was a very smooth event from a law enforcement perspective, and I've really got nothing to report.
You going to be doing the dunk tank next year?
We were looking into it this year, it was cost prohibitive, so next year, I think the explorers are going to be looking and putting on, putting on a dunk tank.
Dunk the chief, or?
Yes. I was gonna, yeah, I volunteered to sit in it for a couple hours.
Well, appreciate your hard work out there.
Mr. Mayor, I have something for Chief. So it's tomato season, and I'm seeing and hearing some complaints about a lot of trucks coming out of the west side of Ulleary fail to stop at the stop sign. And, I mean, they're, they're barreling out, so if we could keep an eye on it, I just, one just happened when I was pulling in the parking lot this evening, so if we could keep an eye on that, that'd be helpful.
Can do.
Thank.
Anything else up here for Chief? No?
You guys did a great job at Park Feet, it was awesome seeing how, all of you guys, you know, wandering around and talking with everybody. Appreciate you guys being there.
Public Works?
Evening, Council, a couple of project updates. Our water lines, water line and sidewalk, and street overlay project is going well. We're actually, we'll meet, meeting tomorrow with the contractor to go over the traffic control plan, why school is in progress, so we'll definitely make sure that traffic is flowing well over there. We're hoping the library roof material will be in here in the next week or so, so we can complete that project. And then also today, we started doing some landscaping and planting of trees out at the wastewater treatment plant, so looking forward to seeing how that job finishes up. That's it for Public Works.
Quick question for you.
Sure.
Roughly speaking, obviously, you can't say exactly, how long should people be thinking they're going to have to go around the, the, sorry, the detour over there?
There shouldn't be anybody having to go around anywhere, so there'll be two-lane traffic. There could be a little bit of traffic at the end of Elizabeth and Caroline approaching onto Yosemite, but all four corners of Yosemite and Mitchell, there will be wide open, and they'll be able to travel east and west, north and south there, no problem.
Maybe, is projects coming to an end roughly?
We're probably three to four weeks until the project's completed, so hopefully two to three weeks in the school year.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question for Justin.
Sure.
Did we get our usual complaint from, annual complaint from Del Rio for the wastewater treatment plant in July?
Let's just move on to the next subject, we have not.
Perfect. Just keep on going. Thank you.
Just a real quick question, the trees that are planted at the wastewater treatment plant, are those the ones that are going as the barrier from the plant to the river? Are those the trees we're talking about?
That is correct.
Okay, great.
Anything else, City Manager, you'd like to say before I take it out to the community?
Yeah, I'll make a couple announcements here. We have lined up two presentations for the next council meeting. We have lined up two presentations for the next council meeting. We are going to post both of these on our Facebook page. We've already posted one. But the first presentation will be SSJID. They will make a presentation about their ongoing effort to take over the electrical service from PG&E. They've been out this effort for about 20 years, almost 20 years, and it's, you know, kind of in a litigious piece right now. And they will be providing an update. We thought it was important to have them come to share with not only the council, but the community on their efforts and where they stand currently, as well as we will bring an item that night, basically an MOU between the city, if the council chooses, and SSJID, where they commit to saving about 15% or more from current PG&E rates, and that any lost revenue the city would have from, excuse me, franchise fees, they would make it whole for their efforts. So that is the first presentation. Certainly welcome everyone to come and participate in that discussion. The second presentation will be by the Escalon Parks Foundation, who has now gained enough funds to complete a first phase of the proposed skate park. So they will provide a status update presentation to the council. They will also, on Wednesday, be in front of the Escalona Recreation Commission to make a similar presentation. So, and then later that night, council will potentially deliberate on a preferred location for the proposed skate park, again, if that's council's direction. So we have those two presentations at the next council meeting, which is slated for August 18th. And then just a note, we have about 915 kids this year in our soccer program. We have almost 100 teams. And so we've had to make the relatively difficult decision to move to a second park. So we did end up using Brentwood Park. We had some conversations with school district, couldn't quite make either of those sites work, but we are using Brentwood Park this season for soccer to spread out our location, or else we were going to go to very late into the night on Saturdays for those games. So some of these things are just us reacting to the growing program, and we will certainly take feedback, comments, concerns that anyone may have about locations or anything like that throughout the year, reassess, and make the best possible decision for upcoming seasons or later this season.
All right, Mr. French. You asked for it. I'm going to give it to you.
Okay.
I was contacted by a few soccer coaches that had to use Brentwood, and they were completely impressed with the quality of the lines and the quality of the mowing that was done at Brentwood Park by the Public Works crew. They absolutely enjoyed it. Thought you guys did a phenomenal job, Justin. They actually, and I said, well, you know, how did it compare to Hogan? And the response that I got back was, we actually prefer Brentwood over Hogan. So kudos to the Public Works team for that. And then also, same folks, I said, was a member of the city out there on Saturday getting feedback. And I guess if that was out there Saturday afternoon, talking with the coaches, talking to the parents, just that interface on behalf of the city. So kudos to the entire staff for really making it happen.
Also want to do mention, I wouldn't give a shout-out to the school district. They're a big help at the beginning of our sports season with those lines, so I don't want to give them not the credit, it's due to them. School John Lyle and his team's a big help with our sports program as well when it comes to the painting.
A couple things let the public know. We are actively working on a solution with the district, so just try to be patient with us. You know, I know it's ongoing, but we're working on something that hopefully will allow our community to be able to use some of these spaces, is what we're hoping. And then also, I did want to give some public recognition to Jeff and Sean, working hard on that SSJID program for us. I think those are kind of things that, you know, don't get seen, but are helping our community in the background as far as hopefully getting to a resolution with the PG&E and SSJID issue. So, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
We'll go out to the public. Anyone like to make a comment to staff or ask a question or anything? Okay?
Hi, good evening, Council. Mayor, wish I was seeing you in different terms, but I see you in the office. My name's Matthew Orr. I live at 2104 California Street. It's right at the corner of California and Mitchell. I've been pretty vocal on Escalon residents about the issue that presents at California and Mitchell since the new sidewalk project has been completed. Sidewalk project, I don't believe was necessary. When I asked for data to prove why sidewalks were necessary or needed in this residence, there was none. I have a background in traffic safety. I've been a sheriff's deputy for the last 10 years, where nine of which I have spent in traffic safety. I have over 400 hours of traffic accident investigation, along with accident reconstruction. I've probably reviewed well over 3,000 traffic accident reports. So to say I'm an expert in the matter is probably accurate. The way that this intersection has now been redesigned, while yes, the sidewalks, I'll admit, look good, it's going to get someone hurt or worse. Last weekend, luckily I was out front, there was a kid on a bicycle. Kids on bicycles, they're kids, right? He wasn't riding recklessly, he wasn't doing anything wrong. But what he didn't do is he didn't stop at the stop sign. Fortunately, there were, the motorist going westbound for once wasn't speeding, and me yelling, watch out, kid slows down, near miss crash. Probably would have had Chief Hardgraves over here doing a death notification. So at what point are we going to ignore this issue because there's not data? I was told that we need data to do things, right? Making this a four-way stop sign, that yes, I understand there's rules to how far a stop sign is. I work in a nearby jurisdiction, uses the same city engineers that you guys do. When we have our traffic safety meetings, it's, hey, it's stop signs should be here. We all vote on it, and we say, yes, I think this is an idea. At what point are we going to let a kid get killed? I was told this project was for the safety of the kids. So I cave. I signed over my portion of the property, let your guys' sidewalk project go in, and now, when I'm saying, hey, this is a serious public safety issue for the kids, oh, there's no data. It's not my problem. Go get a petition with your neighbors and have them sign. Why is it my job? It is your job as the city to provide protection and safety to the community. I don't go telling people that when they come to me with a traffic problem. I sure as hell don't expect the city council or city manager and everyone else in email threads doing that. I've gone through, I think, six chiefs of police since I've lived here. Borges was worthless, told me to write tickets on my way home, because that's what his people used to do. I shouldn't have to write a ticket on my own street. Lackey Flores, ignore emails. Hardgraves, I mean, he's been handed a crap sandwich and does the best that he can, right? He responds to emails, he tries. Unfortunately, it took me saying that I sent an email to Sheriff Withrow for collaborative enforcement efforts to get a Escalon PD motor officer sitting on my corner on a Sunday afternoon. Not his fault. He doesn't have the resources. But at what point is the city going to do something before somebody gets killed? That's all I got.
Thanks for the input.
For the record, I would just like to note that this particular intersection is the one that I brought before council about a year ago and suggested that we turn it into a four-way stop, and was told that we didn't have the warrants to support the need for a four-way stop.
We're still in the staff communications. Anything for staff?
Can I respond?
Yeah.
Hold on one sec. We're not to matters presented.
Almost there.
So a couple of issues or clarifications. Sidewalks are a city provision that are provided. In the county, you know, you can live on well, septic, maybe have no sidewalks. Sidewalks are something that cities should put in. So there's no safety data that is needed to put in sidewalks. The other thing that we've had, we've monitored and measured this intersection a number of different times, and unfortunately, it doesn't meet warrants, which means it doesn't have the traffic volume, the speeds, or the accident frequency to warrant a stop sign at this point. This is a very clinical, technical exercise. It does not mean that the council can't. What can end up happening sometimes is if you put stop signs where they won't, people will recognize intuitively that they're not supposed to be there and start running them. And it can actually create a perhaps more dangerous situation. Again, I'm not saying that that is what is going to happen, but that's why there are certain traffic, I don't know, protocols that are followed. And so as was mentioned, we did analyze this. It did not meet warrants. It was brought before council and that time decided not to move forward with this intersection. So we have looked at this intersection. We have analyzed the data. We've continued to look at it throughout the process. What we did suggest is that despite the warrant issue, if, you know, a bulk of the neighbors would support it, you know, we could make a justification that it has gone in. But as much as there are opinions that we've received that it should go in, quite frankly, there are opinions that we have received that it should not go in, right? And we balance both of those. And so we have a traffic calming program. We suggested that this project go through that process and to see if it could kind of tip the scale here on it not meeting warrants. So I feel like we've been very diligent on this. We've been reactive to the comments and the questions. It's, people will view it differently, of course, and we understand that, but that's kind of some of the history of what we've done over the last year or so.
Quick question on that. Was the traffic study conducted?
Hold on, one more question, but we really can't get into the discussion because it's not on the agenda.
Okay. Was the traffic study done during school, you know, while school was in session?
I don't honestly remember, but...
That would be the only fluctuation on that street that I could imagine would cause.
I believe it was, one week was during spring break, and the other was not on spring break. So it was while school was in session, but I believe one week the data was significantly skewed because it was a week that school was not in session.
Okay.
I think we extended it a week to include a...
I'd like to ask some more questions, but I don't want to upset our attorney.
Okay. Gentlemen in the back there had a question or wanted to address the...
Actually, that's a matter presented from the audience is what he's after.
Okay. So not for the staff?
No.
Yeah, this is public comment, matters from the audience, right?
Not yet. No, this is staff.
No, not yet.
Communications. Okay, so anything else from the community for the staff? No? Okay. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Escalon. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due to state law, action will be, will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. And except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussing any item not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision by the mayor. All right, so that being said...
Mayor Andrew Hagan, council members and my neighbors. My name is Robert Prada, and I've lived near Swanson Park and Escalon for 18 years. I'm here tonight to request that the city approve the installation of a swing in Swanson Park to enhance our community's recreational space. My neighbors, especially fellow LMD property owners, strongly support adding a swing to Swanson Park. The park currently has a playground with a few slides and a big grass field, but lacks swings, which would make it more welcoming and fun for kids, families, and even adults. Swings are simple but powerful. They promote physical activity, encourage social interaction, and are accessible to people of all ages and abilities. Studies show that playgrounds with swings increase park usage, which strengthens community bonds. A swing would complement Swanson's park slides and field, giving LMD families another reason to enjoy our shared space. I understand that as an LMD park, the swing would be funded by property owners like myself. Modern swings are durable, low maintenance, and meet safety standards, ensuring long-term value with minimal upkeep cost. I'm committed to working with the city and LMD property owners to discuss funding options and build consensus for this improvement. I respectfully ask the council to approve the addition of a swing to Swanson Park and to work with the Escalon Public Works Department and LMD property owners to include it in the LMD's next budget or project plan. My neighbors and I are dedicated to making our park a better place for everyone in our district. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hold on one sec. What's the best direction for him with this idea?
If it's, I would say, maybe defer to the council. If something they're interested in, we can fold that into our annual process for the next year. Let us now, reacting to this in real time, let us kind of put some thoughts around it. Council can direct us to bring it back to a council meeting, and you all can vote, and we can incorporate it. There will probably be a 218 process, right? There will be a 218, so it'll be a vote. The vote will be a majority protest vote.
What?
Which means, let's say we get 100 ballots from that district. If more than 50 deny it, then it won't go through. If less than 50 of the 100 deny it, then it would go forward.
I think that's probably not, it's close. I don't want to say you're wrong, but it's, we'd want to see what the original reports allowed. We'd want to see if this is something that would be improvement that would be allowed under the current structure. If not, you could do a 218 process. For LMD, you actually have to have the affirmative votes, unlike water or sewer property-related charges. So anyways, the point is, if the council wants staff to look at it, we'll look at it and bring something back for the council's consideration.
Seems like a rational ask.
Would they need to wait, though, for the next fiscal year to actually...
If you want to include it in the assessments for this year, then you'd have to wait till you could include that in the, you know, you have to wait till you can get that. But there may be a way to start the process and then have the assessment payback. I don't know. We can look at that.
Okay. In the meantime, Mr. Prada, could you put together something loosely, what kind of swings you're talking about?
I can also, not to interrupt, I can get a couple of site plans and a couple of different swings for certain ages and how many, and how much that would cost. I mean, I've got pretty good resources for that, so I can put something together while we're trying to figure out if it's going to happen or not, who's going to pay for it. I can come with what should go in there with some options and how much they are.
Okay.
Can I ask a request? Could you talk to your neighbors, get a little petition together, have them sign it, just say, we support a swing? That way, that would show council that it's the community. You have 50 signatures. That tells us that, yes, the community definitely wants a swing set, and that helps guide the decision-making process so much forward. But I appreciate you taking the time and bringing it before council and trying to make an improvement in your neighborhood.
Cool. Thank you, yes, I'll get on that.
A quick question for city manager.
This will be the last one.
Yeah. Why is it always me that you have to cut it off on? Gosh, attorneys. Do you know the number of homes in the LMD over there? Where we could at least give an idea as to what it is that we would need for consent?
I do not, off the top of my head. We would have had it in the last agenda packet. No, I don't. I don't know that.
I'm 43.
No, that's, that's Palatera.
I'm so stupid asking this question.
I thought that it was around 70.
I feel stupid.
I don't know. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Wait. We've actually entertained this more than we're supposed to in the circumstance, but thank you for bringing it forward. I appreciate it.
I'll add in the recommendation that we look into what we need to do to get these steps taken care of.
Yeah, I think that we give council, we give staff direction to look into this further and...
I thought we actually weren't supposed to do that at this time.
Hold on, we'll do it at the end.
Yeah, that was...
Oh. Sorry.
Mayor, council members, I got a few things that have been run by you quickly. I don't want the answers to any of the questions, just bring to your attention.
Okay.
The town, the lots are still dry, they're still tall. The town, the lots are still dry. They're still tall. They need to be dealt with. I know we have a code enforcement coming on board, thank God, before the town burns down. And there's a lot of things in town that need to be reached at and hopefully he'll be able to help us with that. Next thing is traffic on First Street at 6 o'clock, 6:30 in the morning is a speed alley. Officer Deko, is that his name, the one who rides a motorcycle?
Yes. Yes, yes, sir.
He's been doing a little bit of it, but maybe just buzz down that main street. Police contract is completed, I assume? Is it? Where do we get to see the documentation?
Number nine tonight.
It's in the agenda packet.
The whole contract is? Number nine. I don't have a, not on this one though, not the little guy. It's in the full package. But we can get that on a later date? All right. Doctor, my grandchildren are playing soccer this weekend. A lot of people are concerned that their company names were on t-shirts and no numbers on them. Now, the youngest groups had both. Why weren't the other ones that way? Just for food for thought. You don't have to spend your time with it. Just, people want to know why. Kids on these electric scooters are going to kill, get killed or going to kill one of us. So we need to look at that too. It's getting out of hand. They're running stop signs. They're cutting people off. Somebody's going to get hurt. So, and as far as this gentleman's swing thing, maybe I can get the lines to look into that and help out on that too for the money. We always look for projects and that's right up our alley. Okay, that's all I got. I'm going home. Have a night.
Okay. Anyone else?
Counsel, there are 181 single-family residential parcels in Westwood.
So 91? All right, anyone else? No?
Can I have a question?
Come up to the podium.
I didn't really hear everything you said about Samakine, South Samakine District. And I, several years ago, they were trying to provide us with electricity. And I know there's some homes over here who get it from Modesto or something real close to us and their bills are a lot less than ours. And I'm wondering if that's what this is. It's that they want to provide us with electricity and you're considering it?
So Lois, here's the reality of this situation. 20 years ago, and I can't get into the attorney's...
This will be the only comment. We really have to do a better job of this tonight. It's, I'll take the blame for it while I allowed...
I don't want to do anything you shouldn't do, but I'm just wondering if it has to do with...
Brief response is fine.
Okay, here's a brief response. SSJID, South Samakine, near Gation District, has been trying to take over power within the city of Escalon for 20 years. They're in a lawsuit right now with PG&E for 20 years. Councilmember Kay and I are working with SSJID to really try to bring more community awareness to that, to help lead the argument so that we all have lower electric bills and basically can tell PG&E to take their electric bills and, you know...
I can talk to our neighbors.
Okay, tell them to come to the next meeting. That's what we could use your help with.
All right.
Is that good?
Last...
I'm by the look he's giving you.
Question is it all? Anyone else? No, we'll bring it back to the online? No? Back to the dais? All right, we'll go on to public hearing number seven.
I'll lead it off and then Celinda can take it over. This is a continued item from the prior meeting. The city has five landscape and lighting districts. Well, four landscaping and lighting districts and one benefit assessment district. At the last meeting, the council did approve the other four and continued the Bellatera as there was questions about rate and the increase and kind of how to handle that. So we can get into whatever level of detail that the council desires at this point.
I think it comes down to what Mayor Procham has to say.
Yeah.
So, because we were all kind of stalemated last meeting, so.
Thank you guys.
Not put it all on your shoulders. Okay.
I thought the conversation was very educational. It was very helpful. I was, when I was watching it back, I used to watch, so before I was here, I used to watch council meetings on the YouTube. You can just sit on TV, pause, come back. It's kind of nice. But you pick up on a lot of things that you don't when you're sitting up here. I was very impressed with all the education. City manager did a great job at explaining a lot of the things that were going on in that meeting. So very impressive. And I liked a lot of the conversations that were going on as well. So it wasn't just price. It was a lot of people are questioning what these fees are going to, which are supposed to be special. It's general versus special. Benefits, thank you. Question is, if the LLD doesn't take care of it, will it be taken care of? If it wasn't taken care of by that, then it would be general, correct? Is that how we're thinking of it? Like if that didn't happen? So yeah, that's a good conversation that we have.
Could you review this? We had two stances really, right? Was it two? One from Jeff.
He said three.
No, three, sorry, three. And then one from Sean and one from Jeremy. Did you get to see those?
I did. I did.
Okay.
So I do have some questions on the assessment. And so for the 2425, if we go back, we were at 535 for the assessment. Is that correct?
Verifying.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and so when that 535, I'm just clarifying. So this was a estimate of what was going to be used in that upcoming year, correct? What was the actual? Do we have the actual of what that number is?
We do. I have slides. It'll be easier to find some of these answers with those, I think.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the one, there you go. Okay. You got it. Oh. No, that's not the right one. It's the one that's on your, the stick. Nope, that was the one from a couple of meetings ago.
Over to the left, top left-hand corner?
Try that one. Well, we'll see. It looks promising. I didn't catch the date on that one.
July 6th.
I did see the PDF version if this one's not the right one. Now, this is an old one too. So go ahead and try the PDF if you wouldn't mind, Michelle. It says LLMD visuals 84. Okay, and we'll just make that a big screen if we can. There we go. Okay, so. Just let me work it still. Maybe? There we go. So we had our summary. We know all about the different LMDs that we have. And like we had discussed, we have only just this last one to vote for. So as of 84, we have a total for Bellatera of $79,852. And that is for fiscal year 2425. I have as of 84, I refreshed these numbers right before we, at 5, or they're about. So we have every accounts payable item or every invoice included on there that we know about as of this moment. So, and they only bring in $77,000. So they are over what was estimated previously. That kind of gives us an overview of everybody. And the others, of course, we have updated by small dollars, but still they have been updated a little bit.
So that's $79,852. Does that include some sort of fund going into the, what's it called? The capital replacement?
No, it does not. These are just base costs. So they're not able to provide for their base costs at this point.
And that's whatever their current maintenance fees are, their water, their landscaping.
You're right.
Those types of things.
Those types of things. So that's, as we look over here, oops. We've got the lawn, electric, water tax. The report is the Harris report, whatever's used for trees. Miscellaneous in this part here for Bellatera is parts and then the fence, fences that were replaced. So those are one-time things. So that $10,000 I would expect to drop.
Okay.
So, you know, because we're not going to be replacing neighborhood fences every year. But if we did, that is some of the money that would be used by this kind of piggy bank that we're trying to grow for them now. As of right now, they have nothing in the piggy bank. So the, I think there's...
So it's zeroed out?
Couple thousand bucks in there. Let me bring it up here. So here we were, kind of have that question about how many parcels we have in each, what we were going to increase them to, the max for Bellatera, the new assessments, that 66212. That would give them about that $11,000 or so that Harrison Associates is saying to hold back and grow for their continued maintenance and projects, like the tree trimming. We've got the contract coming through for $30,000 for the tree trimming. There's no money to pay for it. So let's continue on here. Bellatera, this is the slide we're used to seeing. And we can kind of see here where their expenses, they've got a negative $2,917. It's very close. So again, we're not replacing fences every year. I don't expect this to be a real problem going forward. The replacement budget is set to be $11,417. Right now, they've got a cash balance of $6472 and that's as of 84. Prior to, we had a negative balance in there. Your cash balance is going to be affected almost daily as you're paying invoices back and forth. So right now, as of today, that's what it is.
Celinda, can I ask two questions?
Sure.
What is the assessment? What would the assessment be for them to just break even based off of actual data for this last year?
Currently, you have them at the 535 or the 536 because it's, you know, 53594. So I'll just call it 536. I would say a few dollars over that would probably get them to break even with no additional, that's no tree trimming contract, nothing else, just...
Okay, and then to that point, the $30,000 for tree trimming, is that tree trimming just in Bellatera? Or is that tree trimming in all the LMDs?
My understanding that's all under Bellatera.
Just Bellatera.
So that would take them at this point, if they were actually able to stay within the budget and bank $11,417 every year, it would be three years before they could get that tree trimming done.
Are we planning on doing any tree trimming on any of the other LMDs?
Yes, we are. We've currently been working in the Westwood area.
Under Public Works, not under a professional tree trimmer?
Right.
I brought up this slide. We can see that right here, this is Bellatera and I have 2026 listed in here. We're looking at 2020 through 2026. So we only have a few months of the 2026 year. But we do have $3,338 in tree expenses. And so that's going to be Public Works because that's much less than we can contract that out for.
Any other questions up here?
Yeah, but just hold on. Let me get the document in front of me so I...
No problem.
You have another question, but this slide kind of shows us, if we just look at the bottom numbers there, we're going from $42,000 in 2020 up to $79,000 in 2025. It's a good, you know, you're looking at a 10%, a 9%, a 15% jump. It's jumping every year. So to your question about how much would it take for them to break even, it's more than what's being collected now. Or services would have to be reduced. That would be the other option. We could reduce services so that the costs aren't as high.
So to that point, if, let's say hypothetically, we re-advertise for the contract services for park maintenance, the fence, the Murphy Ranch property is developed and that chain link fence comes out, then would the LMD fees go down? Because there's no need to build a capital expenditure fund for a chain link fence anymore because the chain link fence won't exist. And if we re-advertise for contract services, there may be lower fees.
I see your point, Councilman. Currently though, that piggy bank of money helps to support things like the tree trimming for $30,000 that happens every five years. So if they had some fund, that would be helpful for these types of things, not just the chain link, but whatever happens to come up that's requiring more than what they have in their bank account.
Would that trigger a 218 vote?
Wouldn't be added. So it would be my understanding is if you're not adding a item, it wouldn't be. Now, if we're deciding that you're going to remove the chain link fence, I don't know why you would remove an asset that's, you know...
Because the development, they're planning as part of the Murphy Ranch property, that park is supposed to extend out, that chain link fence comes down.
It may not be there in a year or two is what he's saying.
Gotcha. Well, right now, we're not currently collecting any monies to repair that chain link fence. So if you left it at the current assessment, there would be no reduction. If you increased it with some amounts to care for that fence, we would take it off. And I would see, yeah, that that, why wouldn't it trigger it to be reduced at that point?
Can we go back a slide?
We've done the math on the chain link. It's really nominal. I mean, it's single digits per year, per unit.
So Justin, who was doing park maintenance in 2020? Was that Grover?
I believe so. I'd have to look. Around that time is when they started. I'm not sure though. It could have been Swift Landscaping. I'd have to go back and look.
Just curious how, I mean, I know we have an audience member that stayed on top of you consistently for Grover. Thank you for that, Ms. Bennett. But it's alarming to me that park maintenance has more than doubled in five years.
I'm pretty positive that Grover did take over in '21. That's why you see that jump there and then that's the increases. It could have been '22. I'll have to get back to you. But not to say that Swift Landscaping wasn't doing a good job, but we're getting more services than what we were getting prior.
And just, you know, everyone remembers, but after 2020, we had some of the highest inflationary years, you know, ever, right? So it's, it's cost of increase dramatically over that four-year period from about 2020 to 2024 anyway.
I would buy that argument a little bit, city manager, only because of the fact that the residents of Bellatera now are facing over $120 increase. And if you look at all the other LMDs, there are a couple bucks here and there. So that's where I have the heartburn, is that the cost of the fees for the Bellatera in particular are increasing exponentially. However, if you look at the rest of the LMDs, they're, it's not proportional. That's my point.
I could answer that question. If you look at page, I think it's 103 of 185 in item seven, Harrison Associates gives us a listing of what the proposed assessments were. So for, it looks like 10, 11, 11, 12, 12, 13, all the way up through 13, 14, they paid nothing. So that's where the problem began. There's no piggy bank being created here to pay for these things. So when you start getting an assessment again in 14, 15 and you roll it forward, it wasn't sufficient to take care of the expenses. And it looks like they found that out in about 2020 to 2021 and did a raise then. But there hasn't been a proportional raise to make up for those years when there was nothing. That is why I think we're seeing this disparity in this particular LMD as opposed to the others, because the others just carried on with an assessment. Their savings was had in that block of years. And now there's just nothing left to pay for maintenance. So we can build it back up or we can, at your direction, not.
So I have a question on the estimated cost. This might be for Justin. And so the direct, and it could be for you. I don't know. We'll see. So the estimated cost here, the direct cost, has contract services to include tree maintenance professional expenses. And that's in the direct cost. But then we also have capital replacement costs for the Bellatera comprehensive street tree trimming. Are both of those performed by Grover? Is that what we're doing? And then how often? I'm guessing that this comprehensive street tree trimming is above and beyond the tree maintenance professional expenses. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then how often do we get that comprehensive street tree trimming?
We've never had a contractor actually go in and trim the trees. It's always been in-house.
Okay, and that's been 23-ish years? Is that where we're sitting?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's been 23-ish years? Is that where we're sitting? Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, and do we have a price, a cost on what that is going to end up costing?
Around 30,000 and I would foresee it's, that would be every five to seven years depending on inflation. May I just remind you, this is a continued public hearing, so you can go out to public comment anytime.
I, I do just want to mention, when you talk about, you know, 20 to 21, uh, anyone who is in any kind of business understands that there are two things that cost you more than any other thing that you pay for. Human capital and energy, both of those things. Specifically, when I think about landscaping, they're not running around with electric battery powered, you know, weed eaters and lawn mowers. They're out there using gas all day long. What happened to the gas cost, you know, between 20 and 21, it doubled. Uh, then in an industry such as landscaping, I can only imagine that they went through, what I watched every body shop that I, I dealt with, every mechanic, uh, every fast food place, uh, where nobody wanted to work. Uh, and they had no choice but to double wages to be able to get somebody to show up on Monday morning. Uh, so I, I have no doubt that's why, you know, Grover's expenses, you know, ended up skyrocketing so much, you know, during that time period. Uh, I just think that, you know, we'd be wise to kind of remember that as we're looking at that year range and that it's not just necessarily that we're being gouged by one service versus, uh, you know, another. Just wanted to state that as I was sitting here pondering that price jump because I sure didn't like it in 20 and 21.
Pro Tim, you have any other questions before I take it to public and then bring it back to you?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. We'll go to public. Any other input on this before we bring it back?
Okay. So I moved here in 2021. So Brennan at that time was not an issue. And when, I don't remember what year we started with the Fun Bunch. But that's when I started going to the meetings and complaining that the weeds on Brennan were taller than our plants. So at that point, we were paying for gardening and they were doing nothing. And so we paid for years. And also, if Kurt was here, he could probably back me up. At some point, we were paying 300 and something a year and we had a surplus. And that's when you people came and changed the lights to LEDs because we had so much money left there, if you look back on the things. So we were paying for services we weren't getting at that time that we were being charged for. And finally, they brought a whole crew of five people and they're blocked off the street and trimmed. And that's when I came for four months complaining about the lack of them doing their job. But now they are doing their job and I'm on them all the time. And thank you. They are doing a good job.
Thank you.
So at some point, we were being charged for services we weren't getting. And I don't know where that money went because we were paying good money at that time when I moved in. So therefore now we are where we are. So I expect my money to be accounted for and not wasted because I will be here every meeting complaining about it.
Appreciate the input. Um, anyone else? Uh, anything on, anyone online? Okay. We'll bring it back. Uh, any last questions before we go through the, uh, different votes?
So I have a couple of comments. Um, we got to make sure we're staying accountable with Grover. Thank you very much. And whoever we are contracting. So the things that we're paying for, we are getting, right? We don't want to just be paying and then not receiving what is expected in contracts. So thank you so much for staying on them. And now that they're on them, let's make sure we keep them on it. And at least Brennan cleaned up and that area cleaned up. The second thing I was going to say is watering. The overwatering, is that right?
No.
No.
They underwater the ivy. Last time they forgot to turn it on till August.
So underwatering on Brennan, but overwatering the park from what I'm understanding is it's watering while it's raining outside in the cold and we're just overwatering for five months, you know, November to April probably. Um, and so I think it's up to us to not overcharge that neighborhood that they're going to have, having to be paying water bills that might be 25% higher than what they should be paying because we're overdoing that. So we do need to, I see that we're paying for the timing system, you know, the, the timers on here. Um, it's listed and the sprinkler, I started a minute ago. Anyway, oh, sprinkler timers at about 5508 per month. That's what we're paying. Let's make sure that we're adjusting those sprinkler timers for the season so that we don't end up wasting water. If we're going to ask our residents to be diligent about it, we might, we need to be diligent as well. Um, and so that's my, I guess, my two cents on how to get these costs down for this neighborhood because it is a bit. Um, my thoughts though are taking the cost, which is 79, 852, right? And that comes out per person.
Will you do that math? Can I ask a question of staff?
Five fifty eight.
Yeah. Yeah. Now that we're, we're taking away the tree trimming from Public Works and actually going to have a professional tree trimmer, it sounds like, does it make sense to have a little flyer um, that is passed out to the different LLDs and explain a, a quick snapshot, a flyer? Because most of the time, I mean, I think we've spent more time on LMDs in the last four months than what's been going on for the last 20 years. And so I, I think it would be helpful. I mean, we preach transparency. I think it would be helpful to have a little flyer and say, this is what you're getting. Your, your tree trimming is going to be done every five to seven years. Um, we're adjusting your sprinklers for this, just, just so that they know the benefit of what they're getting.
Well, I would say maybe bring that up towards the end for consensus, if you need consensus.
Okay.
Um, let Pro Tim finish her thought here.
Sure. So taking that actual, that seven nine eight fifty two, um, and still put something in a capital replacement fund, I don't know if I'd want to itemize them at this point. Uh, when we itemize it in the way that it is, things change. There was a fence, there wasn't a fence. There's a wall, there wasn't a wall. You know, all those things change. It is going to change over time over the next 30, 50 years, what those needs are going to look like. Um, I do still think we need to bank something. So that, calculating that out for household right now for last year was 558 is what that would be. And then we decide how much we want to put in a cap, capital replacement fund. Something between 5% and 10% of what your actual is. And that way a person, a homeowner can expect to pay their cost plus a little bit of whatever that is costing. That's the idea. That would end up coming up to Jeff's number of about $75 also. So that comes out to six thirteen.
While, while I like your thought, I do have, have to point out, you know, we've got a $30,000 expense that's going to be added to that this year. Uh, where's that $30,000 going to come from? Uh, this is, you know, an LMD specific, uh, issue. Uh, I, I don't know that I necessarily support, you know, the general fund, you know, paying for it and being reimbursed when we know that there's a large scale item like that. Um, my, you know, motion, uh, like, like you said, you know, was basically to, you know, cut that down some uh, and, and just split it, not, not to do away with it, but to, you know, postpone part of it until the following year. Um, so yeah, I mean, if we, you know, went ahead and said $75, you know, this year and then, you know, 5118, I would just ask that we guarantee that next year we add that 5118 plus any other math that Selinda comes up with that becomes necessary. This chain link fence that keeps getting mentioned, at some point I saw it in the slide, we're talking about $325. I mean, that's a, you're really a dollar fifty per house or, or something like that. Um, that's not even substantial enough for us to be wasting our time talking about the chain, chain link fence, just to be honest. Um, anyway, that was kind of my one statement. I did want to ask a quick, quick question, Mr. Collins. Um, I'm sure that you have some kind of calendar to remind you when winter is coming to adjust sprinklers around town and you go around and take care of the timers and such on them. Right?
We do. We actually, Grover and I had a meeting just last week to go over some of that stuff. Yes, we do.
I kind of imagined that there was something in place like that. Um, I was not on council in 20 or 21. So Mrs. Bennett, uh, I'll take the bullet on this one because it wasn't my responsibility. Uh, however, you know, we got a, you know, not a huge city, but we got a pretty big city that I, I think that your crew is 13 people?
Uh, there's eight of us, including me.
Eight. That was over by five. Okay. Including, uh, so, you know, eight people, you know, driving around town, you know, to look at those kinds of things like weeds that aren't being taken care of by somebody that, that we're paying. And residents like yourself coming in and alerting us, you know, to it, uh, and bringing it to Justin's attention, you know, when something, you know, has slipped by him. Um, you know, and, and I don't mean that specifically towards you, Justin, but you know, uh, Public Works as a whole, you know, when they have missed the mark on something like that, that is exactly what we as residents are, are supposed to be doing. And that's why we have this section called Matters Presented From The Audience. So I appreciate you doing so. Uh, but at the same time, I, I don't really want to lynch our city staff over, you know, a, a minor mistake that they may not have noticed because really I can't imagine very many reasons that Public Works should be spending a lot of time on Brennan Avenue as they're going around their, uh, daily business. So those are my, my comments on that. I'll, I'll give it back to you, Melinda.
So this, um, assessment changes every year, you know, we are going to revisit it this year. Uh, while I like the idea of Councilor Kay's cutting it, I don't like revisiting it next year and guaranteeing that that 50 is going to be added on. I don't know what's happening next year. Um, I'm not against, again, funding a capital replacement fund. Again, but I'm, some of the things that I, that are itemized on here, again, I question that they're actually going to be used at that time. Um, at the moment, it's just the $3,000 per year cost on the tree trimming that we're, and it is a $30,000 cost. So it's, it's not one that's going to be fully funded by this. Right now, it's not a $30,000 across all 143 homes. Um, it's broken down about 20 bucks a person, that, um, $3,000 per, per household. Um, but yeah, I do like the idea of taking the actual cost, whatever the actual cost the year before was, see what that looks like. And then we do need to add a little bit to that. And that, that's the idea here is still funding that capital replacement fund, not necessarily by the amount that is being estimated.
So would you like to put an on the, or?
Sure.
A thought out there?
Well, while we're doing that, just a quick, just a quick question while she's looking for that.
No, that's fine.
The $30,000 tree trimming cost, is that a public, a safety issue that's going to be required that we handle this, this year? And it's going to be paid for?
Hundred percent a safety issue.
Okay. So that expenditure is going out this year, without a doubt?
It needs to for sure.
Okay. So then it's just a matter of how does that get funded? And this additional kind of kitty that we're building up, right, that can also be utilized to, to fund those types of issues, correct?
With an LMD expense, it should come out of LMD dollars and not the general fund unless the council would like it to come out of general fund and makes a special request. I would imagine I'd have to defer to Frank to find out.
Yeah, you can always, you can always do that. It's just a budgetary.
I look at this as a long-term recorrection, redirection. So I don't think you can, you know, uh, make it all happen right now. I guess that's my two cents. So.
If they, if they had some money, if they had a hundred thousand in there for the past 10 years, you know, there wouldn't be a problem, but, you know, if doesn't help us.
And so that would be applied to the reserved fund balance or the unfunded maintenance? Where, where would that apply? The $30,000?
The $30,000, they would have, be short $30,000 in their cash and they would have that until we accrued or, you know, received whatever the assessments are. So it would take it several years to pay off in that way. The other way would be if you, if the council just decides to just pay it out of general fund dollars, then we could have that direction. But again, you'd be taking from box A and paying it out of box B. It's just not really how it was intended.
Well, and as I mentioned previously, that, that's putting an LMD expense on every taxpayer in the city of Escalon who does not live in, at the LMD and receive the special benefit of living there. Uh, now your unfunded maintenance of 7913, uh, and expenses over short, are, are both of those numbers where this district is short this year?
This is where we kind of look at the, the totality of it. They, their expenses for the year were under, they didn't, um, receive that money by 2,917. Harrison Associates is telling us on, in addition to this, we want you to have 11,417 saved every year in your piggy bank.
Okay.
If we had three years of that, great, we could pay for the, for the trees. So if we look at our cash balance as of today, which includes last year's money and this year's money that they're working on, they only have $6,400. So that means when the lawn bill comes through or anything else, the city is going to be fronting that until we get the property tax assessments. We get those twice a year. So the city does front this for quite some time. But we know we're going to reasonably get enough money to cover all these expenses. At this point, we do not have that assurance.
And how, how many houses are in this LMD again?
143.
143. So by my math, we have $30,000 that we're spending, uh, on tree service this year and $2,900, um, in expenses that were not covered in their last fiscal year. You're talking about $230 per household that, uh, is unaccounted for at the current rate that they're paying right now. And staff is suggesting $125 as an increase currently. Um, seems like we, as a city and as staff, are still very much taking care of the LMD and curbing quite a bit of, you know, of that cost as a direct hit on them this year. Uh, when you just look at it as a single year and, and not, uh, you know, extrapolated over time.
And to your point too, Harrison Associates wasn't told about the $30,000 tree expense at the time when we had them develop this. They're looking at, uh, in August of last year, we were looking at, what did we, we spend? And kind of going forward and saying, what will we spend? So their assessment is based off of what they assumed this LMD would spend without the $30,000. They're thinking, you know, you should have this money saved. And well, we don't, so.
And we just don't because it's never caught back up to what its expenses were.
But that, but that $30,000 hit, while it does hit this year, the frequency of the tree trimming will be spread over five to seven years. So I don't think it's necessarily justified doing the $30,000 plus the 2,900 because in actuality it would be more like 6,000 if you spread that $30,000 cost over the course of five years.
And I think that that's what the engineers' report really is kind of mapping out here is those kinds of expenses, there, there's no coverage for them moving forward because we aren't building up the E-bank, as Selinda has stated. So it's constantly coming out of the general fund and then being paid back. Uh, and currently they're in arrears, $2,900 and that, they're going to be, you know, $33,000 in arrears by this time next year.
So then how do we deal with the tree trimming? Because our Public Works superintendent said it needs to be done this year, but they don't have the $30,000 in the bank to.
Well, and as, as I mentioned in, uh, our last meeting, you know, there was a, a truck in that neighborhood that was damaged by one of these trees that a limb fell off of because they're overgrown. Uh, there was multiple people that, you know, came up and, and spoke and said, you know, the trees are overgrown. We're having to take care of them ourselves, you know, all of that fun stuff. And they, I mean, they are not, you know, baby trees anymore. Those are very, very mature trees in that neighborhood at this point. Um, so I, you know, I don't think that that's something that we can just, you know, put off, you know, regardless. Uh, but I do think that, you know, we just need to, you know, at least be realistic about the fact that there needs to be some kind of saving, some kind of cushion where it's not coming out of the general fund every year to pay for LMD things and then wait for the money to come back in. At this rate, $125, if we did the full suggested assessment, $126.18, correct? Uh, if we did that full assessment, uh, you know, we're still coming up, uh, $105, you know, short per, per household um, that we are basically going to be loaning to the LMD, uh, out of the general fund. And again, that's not, you know, the city of, of Escalon, you know, not every taxpayer in this city receives those benefits. So it's not their responsibility to pay for it. Uh, so while I still, you know, 100% don't want to apply that entire hit to this LMD, uh, in a single year, I just want to be sure that this is going to be paid for moving forward and that we aren't going to be moving backwards year after year. And we're going to be having the same conversation with Selinda next year where she's saying, well, we knew we had that $30,000 hit and then all of our costs have gone up another 15,000 and now we're $40,000 in the hole this year instead of, you know, $3,000.
Councilman Kay?
Yes.
Um, that's my understanding when we were last, that last meeting was that you're talking about stair stepping it up.
Yeah.
So we're kind of allowing time for them to adjust to that new reality moving forward?
Correct.
Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, it just, uh, Selinda being here and answering questions, I wish you had have been here, uh, last, last week. I'm very happy to see you back and, and feeling better. But.
If I might add also, I mean, we also have to consider the time value of money. We're giving $30,000 that I would otherwise have in the bank earning 4%, 5%.
Right. You know, so, so the city is.
It's costing a lot more than that $30,000.
Yeah, the city is still taking a loss, correct?
Yeah, it's taking years to get it back. But if you decide this is what you want to do, you're going to wait five years to get this money back. Fine. That's what we, we do. We just need the direction in order to nail this shut.
So there, there is a white elephant in the room and I don't know. So there, there is a white elephant in the room, and I don't know if council has thought about this or not. Let's just say the vote decides to charge this new assessment. The reality is, um, next year or the year after, the only increase can go, the increase can only go up $35. Then it caps out and it stops.
There's a mathematical calculation that Harris does every year. It goes up by 3% and then so that max 69715 goes up a little bit more.
Okay, but still it's...
So it's a little bit more than 35, but you, you're on, on the nose there.
Okay, so $44. And I think that the cost would just keep going up even with that 3% escalator that it's, it's, you're getting really close to that maximum assessment number.
85% of their total expenses are park maintenance and water charges. So I guess stop watering the grass, you wouldn't have to cut it as often? I don't know. There's got to be some way to get the, it's under control.
It's not being overwatered because I, you know, I have, I happen to see, you know, some of our parks when the sprinklers are on and it's rainy in March and everything's, you know, we do need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on those to, uh, make sure we're not overcharging our L L Ds for water either.
You can see like that's 3041 that's on the screen right now. That's, that's what our public works department is doing. They're going through and replacing all these things. We're not paying the full, you know, the full professional contract rate that we would otherwise pay.
Well, come in full circle here. Um, does everyone have the necessary information they need to readdress the vote? Okay, so I'm looking for some sort of a nomination or motion or...
I'll, I'll do it. I'll motion to approve as, as presented.
As presented, what do you mean?
Like, um, just as it is. No reduction, no increase, as it's presented, as recommended.
42618.
Correct.
Unfortunately, given Councilmember Strowman's comment, and essentially what you're saying is the, you're, you're afraid that next year we may not have enough money to, enough room to be able to increase to what we need to, to be able to pay back.
Mm-hmm.
And...
And that would trigger a 218 vote and just would throw this whole thing up in the air.
Absolute mess.
Yep.
Given that, I'll second Councilmember Ingalls' motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we got three, two.
Not the outcome that I wanted.
Nope. Okay, we go to nine. Um, you want to go ahead and address that?
Yes.
Want to give an update, Chief?
Uh, I apologize, where were we on?
Oh, no, no, no. An update on where you were.
Oh, uh, there was a structure fire, uh, over on Jerry. It's out, it's contained, no injuries. Uh, looks like no major structure damage other than maybe a shed.
Good. So no one's hurt?
Nobody's hurt.
Okay. You want to go to number nine?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, um, kind of a two-parter here. We do have consideration or approval of all three, uh, MOUs or COUs. These are the labor contracts with each of the association and the police departments, um, vernacular and the bargaining units in the more city hall public work staff. So all three of those are before you. Um, they are each in here in their full language. And then the other item that we typically do around budget time is to adopt a salary schedule. Now that the contract negotiations have concluded, we have what the, um, salary schedules are expected to look like over the next three years. And so that...
My apologies.
So that is, um, the item before you. We can answer any questions you may have on any of the contracts or on the salary schedule.
Any questions up here?
I have a comment, but I'll save it to bring it back.
Anyone in the public? Have any comments? Okay, we'll bring it back, um, online. Nothing? All righty, we'll bring it back to Dais.
So yeah, um, I just really would like to, um, say thank you to all three bargaining units, um, for making a really concerted effort. Um, we obviously heard the community's concerns. Um, want to say, um, thank you to this council for, um, moving this forward and, uh, thank you to the city manager and to Patrick Clark. Um, we missed the deadline by 11 days and, uh, not a year and a half that was presented to us when we first got on council. So 11 days versus a year and a half, um, is a huge step. So really want to say thank you to my fellow council members and to staff and to the community and to the bargaining units for making this a top priority.
Any other statements up here? So we need to make a motion here?
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution XX-25, approving the memorandum of understandings and confirmation of understanding for the Escalon Police Officers Association, otherwise known as EPOA, the General Services Unit, GSU, and the Mid Management Unit, MMU, for a three-year contract period and approving the city of Escalon salary schedule for the same period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Okay. Go to council communications at this point. Um, I think it was Councilman Kay's turn here.
Like you always start with me. I've kind of lost my train of thought at this point in the evening. Um, first off, I want to, uh, again, thank everyone for, for coming out to Park Feet and making it such a, a great event. Um, this, uh, L L D stuff has, has not been fun for any of us, and I hope that, uh, the public can, can understand that, you know, we have to make tough decisions sometimes, and that was kind of what this one came down to tonight. Um, that said, we are looking at the school year coming up next, uh, week and, um, actually, I looked up and saw Mr. Parata, and, uh, that reminded me about something. Before I get on to the school, can, uh, I get a, a second to go along with me as far as moving forward with trying to get a, a swing set installed in Swanson Park?
I will second that.
Appreciate that. Think, uh, I think that's a great idea. I really, really appreciate a member of the community, you know, stepping up for, you know, seeing a need in a, in a park. And I know we've got little kids that, uh, we can get it installed soon. They're going to use it for many years and, and that neighborhood is full of small children. Uh, so I'll be happy to, uh, be in, be in contact with you about anything that we can do to, uh, get it moving forward once we have, uh, direction from the city attorney about exactly how it is that we need to move forward. Uh, now moving on to the school year. Uh, from, uh, you know, our Dent Elementary, or actually our preschools, we have multiple preschools here and, uh, all the way up to our college students. Uh, just want all of you to have a wonderful, uh, school year. Uh, we will be praying for your success, uh, and I'm very, very hopeful for, um, many, many graduates this year and a lot of successful students. Uh, and I'm very, very excited to see Escalon football come back this, this year. Uh, it's a, seems like it's been a very long year without football, and, and I think everybody knows the Cougars is my second favorite team. I'm sorry, it'll be Cowboys till I die. But that's about all I have for tonight. Thank you guys very much for attending.
Councilman Strowman?
Well, I officially object to that Cowboys comment.
I know you do.
Because the Pittsburgh Steelers have six rings and not five like the Cowboys.
That's where you want to be, huh?
And then there's the Bears. Um, however, um, couple of things to note. Appreciate the, the community, um, coming forward and the resonance of the Bellatera, uh, L M D. We hear you. We understand your concerns. Um, on a brighter note, uh, Park Feet was a great time. Um, Chief pulled an all-day event, was there walking the pavement all day long, uh, but it takes an army. So from the Lions Club to city staff, to public works, to the police department, to the community, it was a great event. I really appreciate all the hard work. Uh, tomorrow, case of you that, that don't know, tomorrow is National Night Out. Um, how many stops do we have, Chief?
Six.
So, um, there'll be, we'll be parading through the neighborhood starting at 6:00 to 9:00.
Correct.
Um, so don't be alarmed if you see fire engines and sirens and lights and the ambulance, uh, so.
Don't throw tomatoes.
Yeah.
Six formal stops for our caravan, um, other community gatherings throughout the community.
Uh, so, um, come on out, support your neighbors and say hi to our first responders and don't throw tomatoes at your fellow, uh, your council members.
Exceptional.
Go Steelers! Um, and last but not least, um, without getting into the weeds, because I don't want the city attorney yelling at me, um, just like to note that, uh, earlier today, uh, myself, uh, Councilmember Kay and, uh, city manager French met with Representative Harder to talk about the SSJID PG&E issues. Um, and there's going to be hopefully a lot more information coming out. Um, but quite frankly, we're going to need your help. And so, um, look for, uh, media blitz, um, on our various social media pages, on Escalon residents, because we're, we're trying to figure out how we get past of dealing with 20 years of PG&E dragging their feet and affecting every single one of us with exorbitant electrical bills and the rates just keep going up. And we have nothing to show for it. So I, I'm not speaking for Councilmember Kay, but I am when we say we're going to need your help.
I, I would like to, to comment on that real quick if I can.
Sure. Super quick.
Uh, I was letting Sean, uh, get, give the, give the news on, on that subject. Um, at some point, we are, we are going to be asking for the community's help. Um, you know, this isn't just, uh, an issue that we can handle as a city council. We, we're going to have to write letters, we are going to have to make phone calls, we are going to have to apply some pressure to, uh, seats that are a lot bigger than ours. Uh, and at some point, we will be reaching out and asking the community for help, and, and I sure hope that members of the community can, you know, take a few minutes to, uh, help us out with that effort once we get there. Uh, we aren't there today. It's, uh, a, a long road. Obviously, the, uh, you know, PG&E has been fighting this for, for 20 years, and we have a state government that's complacent in it. They're very much allowing this to be drug out. Uh, and it is to the detriment of our community that they are doing so. Uh, that being said, I just wanted to mention on, on the subject that at some point, we will be reaching out to the community and asking for assistance and, and reaching out with phone calls and letter writing, uh, whatever it is that we can. We just need to find the direction that we need to, uh, zero in on before we, we start trying to do so. We don't want to waste anybody's time or effort. Uh, we want to do something beneficial when, uh, when the time comes. So, back to you. Appreciate that.
Anything last before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Real quick. Um, I'm not going to call him, call him out by name. He's in the audience, but I really want to thank a community member for really stepping up and getting this ball rolling because of, you helped, and it was great having a conversation with you on that Saturday. So I appreciate it. Um, and last but not least, uh, have a teacher in my house. I have a new, uh, middle school student getting ready to start El Pratel on Thursday. And so to teachers and staff, um, our partners at the school district, um, best of luck on the upcoming school year. Um, it's always an adventure. Um, and my last comment is, um, to Mr. Largent, um, I didn't know you for 84 years of your life, but for the last three years of your life, I considered you a mentor and a friend, and you'll be missed.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Ingalls?
Yeah, I, I also just wanted to take a second to, to recognize the loss of John Largent this week. The tremendous amount of contribution that, that he has given to this community in, in his time, talents and treasures, uh, will not be soon forgotten. I, I do look forward to seeing, uh, many of you at the memorial this week. Um, I just want to say that publicly, you know, thank you, John, for all that you did. That's all I have.
Pro Tem?
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to bring up some of the, an issue that was brought up today. Um, and it's kind of my attention, and that's the safety of the kids on those electric scooters and bikes around town. Um, that was brought up today, and it's not like when I was a kid. When I was a kid, you'd go outside and there are 10 other kids out on their bikes and learning how to ride and doing this when they're five years old with other groups of kids who are 10 years old and 15 years old, and we're all kind of learning together what to do. Um, it's not like that anymore. These kids are getting their first bike vehicle when they're 12 or 10, and they don't have that experience, and they're out on the roads and they don't know that wheels go on the right, and we walk on the left, and that's kind of how, um, this works. So I'm wondering if we can kind of brainstorm maybe some sort of rules of the road seminar or media blast or pamphlet or something to outreach to maybe late elementary, maybe fifth graders, maybe late elementary to middle school to try and get some sort of education out. Um, maybe, I don't know if they have like a safety rule.
Part of an assembly or something?
Assembly or something like that. Um, if we can kind of brainstorm, see if, who's on board, chief's on board, or if, uh, city manager wants to think about. Anyway, uh, if I can get that discussion going.
So Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah.
We can't get into specifics because this isn't an agenda item, but, um, when I first got on council, actually prior to getting on council, uh, Chief Flores, um, noted that the CHP would love to do a presentation at schools. And so...
Okay. Yeah, if we can get, uh, whoever we need to get, whether that's, uh, putting our police at the forefront and get some community out there, or if it's even just staff, or if it's just literature, or something moving forward would be great. Um, I'm having that discussion with you guys.
Seems like a great job for our SRO.
Uh, he's already working on it. He's already put something together.
I'd just love to nominate him for it.
You say he's already put something together?
Yes, he has.
Fantastic.
Okay, awesome. So we should see that moving forward this, uh, school year at some point?
I believe at the, at the beginning of each year, he tried to do like a little assembly for all the students, and I do believe he wants to address it at that point because it has been a noticeable issue this summer.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Um, the other safety issue, I guess, is from the last meeting that I had missed. I know that it was brought up, some of the crosswalks in town are having some issues with the lights or with their visibility. Um, I personally have talked about the Elizabeth and Highway 120 crossing. It's personal to me. Um, and I know we've tried to, and that is Caltrans jurisdiction, and we've tried to do some improvements. I'm wondering, uh, if we can just kind of look up numbers on what a hawk system would look like out there, um, whether we're paying for it or somebody else. Just want to know kind of what a ballpark figure would be on what the price would be so that we can have that as a stop when you push the button and people can cross on that side of town because that is one of, that is the only crossing on that side of town, um, at the moment. So, um, if we could get, get some numbers pulled for that just so that we can know what we're dealing with here, um, that'd be great. Okay. And besides that, it was great showing up Park Feet. Weather was great. Thanks for coming out. I think we have one more farmer's market coming up, if I'm not correct. That's the next thing coming up. Please join us out at Main Street Park for our final, um, farmer's market. So good to see all you guys today. That's it.
All right. Well, I think just about everything was covered. Um, I wanted to say...